...with us tonight. Welcome to the regular city council meeting of September 26th.
Recording in progress.
Thank you. Welcome to the McMinnville City Council regular meeting of September 26th, 2023. I would like to call the meeting to order and ask Claudia Sisneros to do a roll call.
Counsel Geary.
Good evening.
Counsel Minkie.
Present.
Counsel Payne.
Present.
Counsel Chenoweth and Counsel Peralta are absent this evening. Counsel President Garvin.
Here.
Mayor Drabkin.
Here, thank you. And then I've asked Chief Leifert if he'll lead us in the pledge. Would you come up and lead us in the pledge from the front of the room, please?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And will you stay up here with us for a moment, Chief? And could I ask Chief Hanifin to join us and Counsel President, if you'll come down in front? You may or may not know that Chief Leifert here is quickly approaching retirement. This will be his last council meeting, though we thank you for being here. Chief Hanifin, thanks for joining us this evening. In honor of your service and recognition of your service, the city of McMinnville, our executive team and members of your fire team have taken the opportunity to write a proclamation for you. And so Chief Hanifin and Counsel President/Fire District President Garvin and I are happy to honor you with this this evening. Whereas Rich Leifert was hired as a fire chief by the city of McMinnville on July 1st, 2008. And whereas Chief Leifert leaves big shoes to fill at the city in leadership, first and foremost and always in humble service to the community. And whereas Chief Leifert selflessly made sure to leave the city of McMinnville, excuse me, to leave the city of McMinnville better than he found it and sacrificed a lot of blood, sweat, and tears to ensure it.
Whereas Fire Chief Leifert has a gift of using humor to effectively diffuse tension. And whereas Fire Chief Leifert could always be counted on to provide innovative solutions to address perplexing challenges. And whereas Fire Chief Leifert is a kind-hearted, trusted, reliable member of the executive And whereas Fire Chief Leifert has displayed true dedication to providing outstanding fire and EMS services to McMinnville community. And whereas Fire Chief Leifert has been a reliable, collaborative, and welcoming colleague who is always available to lend a listening ear. And whereas Fire Chief Leifert's commitment to equity and inclusion supported women in leadership roles among fire chiefs.
Whereas Chief Leifert's commitment to equity and inclusion brought forth the McMinnville Department Pride Shirt and Women in Fire Department Association leadership roles. Do one more.
Whereas Fire Chief Leifert has supported the enhancement of local fire and emergency services through modern practices and programs. And whereas Fire Chief Leifert has shown visionary leadership throughout his fire
And whereas Chief Leifert has shown steadfast dedication to service throughout challenging situations. And whereas Chief Leifert's sense of service and commitment to the community is valued by the community members of the city of McMinnville. Now therefore I, Remy Drabkin, Mayor of the city of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim September 26th, 2023, as Fire Chief Rich Leifert Day in the city of McMinnville and urge the community to reflect on the passion and leadership of this caring and community-minded fire chief who is leaving a legacy behind. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of McMinnville to be affixed this 26th day of September, 2023. We have a few things here for you. Of course, your framed proclamation for your day. I expect that in the foyer of your house for eternity. And of course, something to acknowledge your retirement. Would you like to say a few words? Jokes?
I'll probably throw some humor in if you don't mind. It's been an honor and a pleasure to serve the community that I live in and I valued. I sent a little note to the executive team the other day on how much I appreciate what a great team that they've been to work with. The same goes for the council and the previous councils. It's been an honor serving this community and I just hope I left it better than I found it.
I think you all know the song. It starts out, "Happy Fire Chief to you." And it ends with cake. So we are going to take, we are going to pass out some cake for everybody to enjoy. Give you an opportunity really quickly to shake hands with the chief, thank him for his service, and then we will reconvene in just a moment for some additional proclamations.
I just want to know if you're going to go up in a jet as part of your retirement party.
You know, I've been on the jet. And while as exciting as it was when I was in my twenties, not so much in my sixties.
We still need more?
Well, Mike, what's Mike up to? Mike's up to four pieces now?
No, they did not ask. I'm asking for them.
In anticipation of hate.
Oh, yeah.
I'm going to be attending a Mura Hand in Nebraska.
Oh, okay.
So I'll be zooming in.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you might as well play tomorrow, eh?
Well, thank you for your patience, especially for those of you that came for the business portion of the meeting. Was reminded recently to enjoy, enjoy the good moments and not rush through them too often. So thank you, Chief, for letting us celebrate you a moment tonight. And thank you to those that are in attendance for allowing us that time as well. We do have a couple additional proclamations and seconds on cake for anybody that's interested, but you're going to have to get it yourself. And no judgments. Great. We encourage you to eat it. Our next proclamation this evening is, our next proclamation this evening is for Indigenous Peoples' Day. Whereas the city of McMinnville recognizes Indigenous People's Day. And whereas the city wishes to honor the fact that the community of McMinnville is built upon the traditional homelands of the Yamal Band of the Kalapuia Peoples and affirms the legal rights of the nine federally recognized tribal nations in the state of Oregon and all indigenous peoples everywhere. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegation of Native Nations to the United Nations, sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. And whereas the United States endorsed the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples on December 16th, 2010. And the declaration recognizes that indigenous peoples have suffered and continue to suffer from historic injustices as a result of their colonization and dispossession of their lands, territories, and resources. And whereas the city of McMinnville recognizes the many contributions made to our community through indigenous peoples' knowledge, labor, spirituality, technology, science, philosophy, arts, and the cultural contribution that shaped the character of McMinnville. And whereas the city of McMinnville has a responsibility to oppose the systematic racism towards indigenous peoples in the United States, which perpetuates high rates of poverty and income inequality, exacerbates disproportionate health education and social stability. And whereas the city of McMinnville shall continue in its effort to promote the prosperity and well-being of any Native American, Alaskan native, and indigenous community, and that Indigenous Peoples' Day shall be used to reflect upon the ongoing struggles of indigenous peoples on this land, to celebrate the thriving culture and value that indigenous people add to our city. And whereas that the city of McMinnville encourages all businesses, organizations, and public institutions to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day. Now therefore I, Remy Drabkin, Mayor of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim Monday, October 9th, 2023, as Indigenous Peoples' Day. And in witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand this 26th day of September in the year 2023. We have a proclamation as well for Made Day in conjunction with the National Manufacturing Day. And I don't believe we had any representation here for Indigenous Peoples' Day, but I do see many members of our economic development team here. And so I'll read this and have some for you as well, and perhaps you'd like to say a few words at the end. Whereas manufacturing and traded sector companies make a very significant contribution to the national, state, and local economy. And whereas our community is fortunate to be the home of nearly 100 world-class manufacturing and traded sector companies featuring a multitude of products made in the city of McMinnville and 340 throughout Yamhill County. And whereas these companies add to the vitality and prosperity of our community by employing nearly 2,200 people in McMinnville alone and nearly 6,000 employees throughout Yamhill County. Manufacturing has a revenue impact of $327 million in the city of McMinnville and nearly $1 billion in revenue impact throughout Yamhill County. Now therefore I, Remy Drabkin, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim October 6th, 2023, as McMinnville Made Day in conjunction with the National Manufacturing Day. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of McMinnville to be affixed this 26th day of September, 2023. Would you like to come up with Patty Herzog, the executive director of McMinnville Economic Development Partnership? We have a, would you, I don't have a microphone to hand you right now, but would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. The cake was made in McMinnville. Thank you, Counsel President, and thank you, Mayor, for the proclamation. We're very grateful for that. And next week, there will be several activities happening throughout the county, tours to different manufacturers, and we appreciate all those companies in Yamhill County and the city of McMinnville that will be offering those tours to young people. So thank you for your support.
Wonderful. Thank you. And we will get you a copy of the proclamation as well. We are now going to take comments from community members. Any interested audience members are invited to provide comments, and any comment provided that requires some sort of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing today or some future date. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If you wish to speak, please use the raise your hand feature in Zoom to request to speak. Once your turn is up, we'll announce your name and unmute your mic, or you may send a chat directly to our city recorder, and we will announce you. Do we have, and we have changed our practice a little now when you come up to testify. We are just asking you to announce your name and the city that you live in for the record as opposed to asking you to state your address for the record, although we will collect that on the comment card. Do we have anyone signed up?
Yes. First, we'll start with Karen Thurman.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Thurman.
Mayor, City Council, my name is Karen Thurman, and I live in McMinnville. The homeless issue is at the forefront of many in our city. It's an overwhelming issue if looked at on a global scale. We need to look at it for what is best for McMinnville and start to implement some possible solutions to this multifaceted problem. From what I understand, Measure 110 doesn't tie your hands to be able to address open drug use. It changed it from being a criminal charge to a violation. These individuals need to be held accountable and cited repeatedly as it might be their wake-up call to seek and stay in drug treatment. The illegal campers who merely get the stated 72-hour notice and then move a few blocks can be looked at in a different way. The majority of these campers are not street legal and yet are being allowed to operate on public streets. They are even being, some are even being towed by another vehicle to their spot. No visible mirrors, license plates, tags, lights, brake lights, backup lights. Are they being checked to make sure they have valid driver's license, valid registration, and proof of insurance? These are all existing laws already on the books that we are all subject to. There should be no preferential treatment. If they receive enough citations, they might find a solution to their problem or move to another city where their answer might be. We cannot fix all of society's ills, but we must uphold the laws that are on the books to everyone in the city. The city is paying a lot of money for repetitive cleanups for small population that's here, money that could be better spent elsewhere. Thank goodness we have the task force and police department who are doing what they can. This is not a way of life. Can the city hold maybe job fairs with individuals identified by the police and task force as being ready for a change and pair them up with a potential employer who is willing to take the risk with them? Baby steps, not a one-size solution fits all. We are a compassionate city that does offer assistance to people who need it and want it, but the individuals receiving it must take responsibility and do the work, too. We cannot be throwing money and food at them, being willing, and they must be willing to do the work for themselves. For the success, change needs to come from them and maybe a leg from, up from us. Nothing is free. Life is hard. The assistance given was bought and paid for by someone working and donating it. The value of these gifts seem to be lost by some and is expected by others. I agree that the safety of the children of the city is a priority, but so is the livability of the tax-paying people in McMinnville. If we are not careful, McMinnville will become the next Portland, Seattle, San Francisco, and Los Angeles, where people and businesses are leaving, the tax base is shrinking, and we will lose the reason why we love this city so much.
Thank you so much for your comments. Is there anyone else signed up for public comment?
Yes. Next, we have Cindy Paulson.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last name.
Cindy Paulson.
Paulson. Thank you for coming, Ms. Paulson.
My name is Cindy Paulson. I live in McMinnville between McDonald and McDaniel Lanes and have for over 50 years. I'm here today to ask the mayor and city council to make the safety of our children a priority. When previous city and community leaders wanted a safe after-school program for children, Kids on the Block was created. When some community members wanted a play structure in Upper City Park, fundraising was done, and together the city with community members built a play structure. When the city wanted to expand our parks to include neighborhoods and upgrade existing parks, the largest park bond with support from the community was passed. All of these show both financial and physical support from city and community members working together for improvements to programs, especially benefiting the children. Our community parks offer a diversity of options for all to enjoy. Unfortunately, not all our parks are currently safe for kids to play in. Last Friday, on McDaniel Lane, there were several RVs parked on Patton School Side near the baseball area with tarp awnings and tents set up under them. Close by a long fence area of school grounds were kids playing. With the unpredictability of these individuals, I don't believe it to be safe for them to be in same vicinity of our kids playing on school grounds during school time. Kids can't walk safely to their school due to sidewalk blockage of dogs tied to school fence or debris spilling over from parked RVs. This last week, driving into and out of Joe Dancer Park for our grandchildren's soccer, I along with others visibly witnessed individuals doing drugs, evidence of open fire on the sidewalk, mounds of debris, and tents. These individuals do not care or live by any rules, have no accountability or responsibility. It would be unsafe for any child or adult to ride their bike using Marsh Lane to practice or games at Joe Dancer Park. We need to get them off of Marsh Lane and away from any school area. When the city comes asking the community to support and fund the new recreation center by passing a bond and paying more taxes, this time I will be a hard sale. I think it would be great for our community and children to have a facility that would provide years of recreation access in one location. But will it be another place for RVs, tents, fielded debris, and a city-sponsored dumpster placed among those who do not want to improve their livability? Will we have to walk through the debris to get to the entrance like we have to drive-through to get to Joe Dancer Park? I appreciate your time dedicated to city services and improving our community. I'm not asking you to do less for those in need, but here to ask you, Mayor Drabkin and city council members, to make the safety of our children an expedited priority. Please quit making excuses when several other cities have figured it out and created safe zones. And I would like to thank Counsel Chenoweth for being a voice in support of kids' safety.
Thanks so much for your comments. Is there anyone else signed up?
Yes. Next, we have Robert Rapp.
Thank you, Mr. Rapp. Nice to see you again.
I'll be very brief because they've covered it all.
Will you start by stating your name and the city you live in for the record, please?
Robert Rapp, 1145 Juanita Way, McMinnville, Oregon. And so I would just like to thank you for the liaison of Chris Chenoweth and the job that he's doing with the McMinnville Community Task Force. I was here to ask you to assign someone, but apparently he's already jumped in and is doing a good job with him. I would like to find out what workarounds you've come up with for Measure 110. It's been several weeks now. We blame everything on Measure 110. They've suggested many things like parking tickets or registrations or all kinds of different ways that you could move these people along. And the last thing is, I'd like to recommend maybe that you get with the county commission. Find some kind of a work farm or a workplace where these people who continually break the law are sentenced to for six months, where their behavior determines their privileges, and where they, you afford them the counseling and the kind of services that they need. And everything else has pretty much been covered.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else sign up for public comment?
Yes, we have Jeremy Seville on Zoom.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Seville, if you'll state your name and the city you live in for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Jeremy Seville, and I live in McMinnville, Oregon, on Karen Court, just off of Grand Haven. And my concern is that in the past year or so, there's been a noticeable uptick in very loud and very fast cars driving, I'm not exactly sure where. I think they're mostly on 99, but also in the parking lots of Walmart and Winco. And, you know, it seems to start around nine o'clock at night and go often until two or three o'clock in the morning. And you can hear these cars for miles. I can't be the only person that hears them, but I don't know if there's a noise ordinance in the city of McMinnville, but there doesn't seem to be any enforcement. And it makes it, for me, who has to get up often very early, hard to sleep. And I don't have any children of my own, but I can imagine that people who do have children and have to get their children to bed, you know, at a reasonable hour, are probably struggling with the noise as well. And so I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention if it hasn't been brought before, because I'm imagining that there's a potential safety issue there, too. And plus, it's very loud, and the decibels are probably higher than what would be safe for human ears. So that's my primary concern, and thank you for taking my time to, taking your time to receive my message.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else signed up?
That was everyone.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the gallery that would like to provide public comment this Is there anyone else on Zoom that would like to provide public comment this evening? Is there anyone on the phone?
We don't have anyone on the phone.
Thank you. We'll now welcome back Patty Herzog, the executive director of McMinnville Economic Development Promotion, to give us our annual presentation on MEDP. Thank you and welcome back. The mic is yours.
Thank you.
Yes.
There's a presentation, so it's just being loaded right now. While we're waiting for that to come up, I just want to thank the council, mayor, the executive team for all of your support of McMinnville Economic Development Partnership. We couldn't do the work we do to support businesses and bringing great jobs to McMinnville if it weren't for the support from the city. It starts with your leadership, with the executive team, and all of the staff with the city that support the work that we do. So with that, So with that, I'd like to start our presentation on what we've been working on for the last year. It's a two-man, a two-woman team, I should say, and then we have a five-member board. So Heather Hadley Blank and myself. Heather's our deputy director, I'm the executive director. So what you're seeing here, the board members worked on reworking our vision, mission values are new, added this year. So you can see we're working to be a trusted community resource. We're continuing the long tradition of being intentional in the growth that we do here in McMinnville, staying connected and also being adaptable to new changes and opportunities as they come forth. Next slide, please. We continue to work in four strategic priority areas: business retention and expansion, workforce development, business attraction, and innovation development. Next slide. This is a long game. A lot of what we do, it could be akin to special forces. Some of the things that we work on can't be talked about, some of the things that we spend a lot of time on doesn't see light of day for many years to come, if ever. But the work is important, and when it does work, these are the examples of what you see. Lori Robertson, a startup, a real success story that started with a call in November of 2021 to Heather before I had gotten here, and she was interim director, and now she's a flourishing business out at Bunz Village. So there's a quote from her. We also have very innovative companies like Chipol Farms, working on regenerative agriculture and trying to solve waste stream problems with organic waste. And Empower, which is a company working on protein bars. And then we've got those recruitment projects that we cannot speak about. Their names will not be spoken tonight. But needless to say, the goal here is to bring high-density, high-wage jobs to our community. Next slide. This is the work behind the scenes. So all of these gears working together, we're connecting, we're problem-solving for companies, we're working with our collaborative partners at the state, regional, and also other communities, stakeholders to support with resources, and helping those companies stay strong here, whether it's helping them to get the workforce that they need, helping them get connected to programs that will grow their businesses, keep them here local. All of this work can be from one phone call to many, many phone calls, meetings, and exponential amount of work that takes place there. Next slide. A little bit of transparency about our budget here. We get funded from three sustaining funding partners, as I mentioned. Thank you to the city of McMinnville for their support. McMinnville Water and Light is a supporter, and McMinnville Industrial Promotions. You can see a small portion of what we receive is from our investors, our investor circle. Those are companies that have contributed funds to the work and programs that we do. What you don't see reflected in this, because these are just, you know, this is the check that's written, but what you don't see is the in-kind participation that the city gives here. And city manager Jeff Towery and I have spoken about this and how we can better reflect the support that the city gives. Scott Burke has given amazing support in our IT department. Without that, MEDP would struggle to be able to serve the business community. The offices at the Community Development Center, being that connected to the work of building business in our community, those things are not reflected in this slide. So thank you again for the city's support in what we do. Couple other things to note on here. This year, we brought in $635,000 worth of grants to the community that we're managing. We did receive a $245,000 grant from the city of McMinnville to do workforce development programming. And then you can also see on here, $3.1 million that we've worked with our partners and companies to bring into the community. These are other workforce development grants. These are programs through Business Oregon, and a little asterisk there, we're looking at about 3.4 pending with other programs that are on the table right now that we haven't heard about. So, next slide, please. Let's talk a little bit about business retention and expansion efforts. Next slide. We do a lot of site visits with companies, having regular scheduled meetings with companies to help get the word out and connect them to the resources that they need. Parker Megget, we've had site visits out there. Phoenix Solutions is a startup company that we've also provided support to. We meet with Excel Tech on a regular basis, and Cascade Plant here has recently changed their name to Radius Recycling. So it doesn't matter from a startup like Phoenix Solutions to a company like, you know, Cascade Steel, Radius Recycling, it's all size spectrum and all different types. Traditionally, MEDP has worked with what we call traded sector businesses. Those are businesses that bring new dollars into the community and sell goods and services outside our community. But right now, we're working with everything from startup companies, retail businesses, and traditional manufacturers. Next slide. What we've been able to secure in funding for businesses directly is $1.8 million. A big portion of that was with APT, and many of you were at that event on September 14 to recognize Business Oregon's investment in a clean room facility that will double the number of employees paying high-wage jobs in the semiconductor industry. So really excited about that. Again, two staff members, and we've consulted with over 100 businesses. We've followed up on 42 different business leads that we've received. And then these are some of the other forums and activities that we've had. BizCon was a small business conference that was held a year ago in October. We run on a fiscal year, so that was one year ago. And then Coffee Clubs, those are held monthly. We have business forums, and these are the attendees that we've seen in those. Next slide, please. Speaking of the 1.2 million, here's a great picture of us celebrating with the Director of Business Oregon and Arthur Chapoot, who just does an amazing job of partnering with his economic development team here. And we were just thrilled to have the mayor speak at that event, to have council president there. Councilor Menke was also there as well. So thanks for your support in celebrating that accomplishment for our community and for APT. Next slide. Business attraction. Next one. So these are the goals that we have. This year, the MEDP board sat down for our strategic planning session, and the board members really looked at, and one board member in particular, Mike Morris, said, "Any good business knows who their customer is." So when we look at McMinnville and we're attracting businesses, who is our customer? Who are we looking for? And so we, as a board, sat down and looked at that, and these are the things that the board came up with. We want to look at high-density, high-wage jobs. Looking from the Mactown 2032 Plan, a minimum of seven to 11 jobs per acre is the goal. But also, it's not just about the size of the company, but it's the company values. Do they have career pathways? Do they offer a good company culture? We want companies to come to McMinnville that are ready to engage and be a part of the community. We want leaders in those companies that are ready to engage and get involved in helping make McMinnville the great place that it is. And also, looking at those companies that are focused in innovation, research, and development, especially as we look to develop the Three Mile Lane area of property. Next slide, please. We do have some challenges, as any group has. Some of the challenges that we have in attracting businesses to our area is that lack of attainable workforce housing. It's a struggle for everybody right now, and we hear that from our business community as well. Lack of available trained workforce. We are working diligently with our partners to address this. We work with Chamecada. We have a monthly workforce partnership meeting that gets together with the school district and business leaders to talk about what we can do to increase our trained workforce. And then a limited available shovel-ready land for development. A company that could come in and get ready now. Most of the businesses that we're talking, they want to move in today, operate tomorrow. So we know construction timelines take a little longer, and getting those permits through, that's a process. So we have a bit of a lag in that, a bit of a challenge to work with. Next slide. Workforce development, one more. We are working on growing our own workforce. So if you're looking at having a hard time attracting companies here because of a limited availability of housing, how we can do that is keeping those that we have here that are already housed and finding new opportunities for them. So if they're not going on to college, what can we do to get them here? There is a great project that John Dietz and the team at Mac Water and Light led with the high school to work on the mobile water filtration program. If you haven't seen it yet, it's really remarkable, and seeing the kids that were involved in that has just been a really great project. The Works Program this year celebrated 10 years, and we probably have one of our best years this go-round. Lot of good positive feedback from not only the interns, but also the companies that participated as well. And then the workforce partnership that I mentioned, bringing lots of connections and grant money to help strengthen our workforce partners in this area. Next slide. So again, on the workforce side of things, the Works Program, it's, when I first came here, and Heather was telling me about the Works Program and the number of applicants we get, it's akin to an Ivy League program, because we get over 100 applicants for nine slots. And so what we're looking at here, the limiting factor is the number of companies that are willing to take on an intern. So we've got a lot of applicants looking for opportunities here. So the message is, if you're a company and you want an intern, we have plenty of applicants looking for spaces with your companies. These are from all over the Pacific Northwest region. We get great interns out of Lynnfield University as well. We ran a workforce development grant through the Youth Development Division. That was the Career Bound Program. Thirty-five students between the ages of 14 and 24, and these were paid internship programs with companies. And then we've had over 12 meetings this year, and there's 38 members on our partnership monthly group. Next slide. There's a picture of the Career Bound interns this year. They worked six-week programs, many different jobs, and then went through a training program with Liz Knapp and also John Capaccio at Chamecada to give them some professional development and training along with that. Next slide. Innovation development, one more. It's the mayor's new favorite word. Make innovation. And it was sitting there right in front of us the whole time. So we're really excited about this part of the work that we do, connecting with the innovative companies that we have here, pulling together entrepreneurs to get support and peer networking, connecting them again with the resources that they need. And also something that the mayor has led is the partnership with OSU and building that opportunities for Centers of Innovation Excellence. And while they didn't get the second award, they did get the first one, and I think it's been a great partnership and much to come in the years ahead with the partnership with the mayor and OSU. Next slide. We had the opportunity to be the fiscal administrator for a High Impact Opportunity Grant that the mayor brought forth with Solid Carbon to do some research around that and get some testing on that carbon sequestering concrete formulation. That's a mouthful.
That's the, you can just call it the Drabkin-Mead formulation. That's what it's named.
That's what I should have used. Much easier to say. And this is a pilot pour that was done over in the Granary District area, so everybody gets a chance to see that. And then if you're also out at Miller Woods on October 7, they're going to have a barn raising with New Energy Works on another concrete pad that's out there. Very exciting work. Looking forward to many great things from Solid Carbon and Sean Mead. Next slide. Get out the glasses, zoom in, that over 100 business that we've had contact, we broke them out into the different areas that we've worked with them directly. So you can see on the business retention expansion side of things, these are companies that we're connected to resources, innovation development, those are mostly startups that we've talked to. And then you'll see in the business attraction piece, a lot of project names, Project Energy, those are all those ones that we can't talk about. Next one. Biggest news, I think, and one of the things that makes McMinnville such an amazing place. I'm coming up on two years in McMinnville. And some of the things that I really point to is, and I talk to friends back in Nevada, and I tell them, "McMinnville's the coolest place. Where else can you go where they have a steel mill that's still operating? In wine country." That's amazing to me, right? A 100-year-old bank, community bank, right here in McMinnville. And this amazing organization, McMinnville Industrial Promotions, that is celebrating 70 years of business development. This is a volunteer board that meets on a monthly basis that helps fund MEDP's work. They have set the bar with their Nine for 69 campaign. Cascade Steel is one of those companies that was brought in during that campaign. And so I think to live up to that legacy is what drives us at MEDP. And we are so happy to be a part of the legacy that those leaders have built for McMinnville. Next slide. And that is our report.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Wonderful report. Any councilors have questions at this time? Comments? No? Thank you. Thank you for the great presentation. Thank you for the work that you do on behalf of the city of McMinnville. We'll now take reports from councilors on committee and board assignments. I'll start this evening to my right, Councilor Menke. Her notes are just about 50 pages long, so don't be concerned.
Okay, I've got to report briefly on YCAP. YCAP has successfully acquired the Turnkey property on 9/123. Look for an announcement, publication, it will come out with Providence. We're in the process of reviewing all vendor accounts, property management items, to ensure everything is fully transitioned. Additionally, we have already secured some capital-related grants to make critical building improvements. YCAP will release a press release in coordination with Providence in the weeks to come. Let's see. Development held its first donor luncheon at YCAP. It was for the Food Bank. While the attendance was lighter than hoped, we were grateful to board members who attended, and one donor stated that they would be, we would be receiving a significant gift from them soon. In addition, one donor who could not attend sent in $20,000. That's a good event. Several comments. YCAP Development is in the final stages of securing a donation from Yamhill County HHS for $889,088 grant, which will support the Turnkey program as well as the Food Bank. A grant request was submitted to YCCO for share funding in the amount of $500,000 to support staffing and operations at the Turnkey program, as well as the ADP Newburgh and ADP McMinnville locations when they open. In addition, YCAP received word from HB 5019 that we will receive $946,385 for rapid rehousing, $378,000 for ADP Newburgh. Just a brief update. Just a brief update on the two ADPs. ADP is any-door place, they're the navigation centers. In Newburgh, ADP, YCAP's conditional land use permit was approved by the Newburgh Planning Commission and is scheduled for December 31st, 2023 opening. YCAP will continue to work with the Sledge Shet Consulting LLC, Home Builders Foundation, MODS PDX, and the Booking Group to ensure successful opening. And then in McMinnville, YCAP's 327, 329 Southeast Adams Street Shelter Facilities are currently under construction and on time for a May 2024 opening. YCAP's ADP Program Manager will begin hiring additional support staff beginning in early October. Briefly on Parkway. The Crookshank Road Project is 95% paving complete. It will be finished by the end of the month. The signal work on that particular road will take until December to finish. There's been a utility delay, was part of the reason for the paving taking as long as it did. The interchain modifications for 219 Phase 2A, there are no recent updates. The funding for McDougall Highway 18 Junction, there was quite a bit of discussion on this. There is $4 million earmarked for safety improvements. There's another $4 million that Representative Salinas has obtained for us, but it's, if we can keep it through the year, that will be good because there's a lot going on in the Congress at the moment. But hopefully we will still continue that money coming out of the year. We are going to be presenting in November for the state legislature on the Parkway, or yeah, on the bypass. I believe Counselor Chris Chenoweth will probably be testifying at that one. I won't be available, so hopefully won't be attending. That's what I've got.
Thank you very much. And Counselor Payne.
Thank you. Landscape Review Committee met last week and approved, and reviewed and approved three landscape plan reviews, one for Homeward Bound's new site, New Energy Works, and the expansion of Evergreen Lodge, and also approved a street tree removal. And Lipstick, the local public safety coordinating council, does not meet until tomorrow.
Thank you. Counselor Gary.
Thank you. The DEIAC met and spent the bulk of the time hearing from the Parks and Rec and Open Space Master Plan Consultant and getting engaged in that process, and a few other housekeeping items about terms and commitments and committees and meeting length. MIRAC is in between meetings. Affordable Housing, have not yet joined a meeting for that, but I saw that they had gotten postponed their September meeting, so will be of an October meeting. And then met with staff as a kind of a pre-kickoff to the kickoff of the Stormwater Utility Public Advisory Committee, and that will actually kicked off on the 16th of October at 5:30 PM at the Wharf. And that's my report.
Thank you. And Council President.
Thank you. Airport, we got a nice loud air show coming here in a couple days, so we'll be here Friday, Saturday, Sunday. I think Counselor Manke's doing opening remarks on Friday and myself on Sunday. Not sure who's doing it Saturday. And we'll have a vacancy on the Airport Commission, a partial term, so we'll have those applications opening up here soon and do those interviews towards the end of the year. Fire District, we're through our Task Force review of Fire Chief applications and finishing that up to submit to Director Hedges from HR, and she'll notify those candidates. We'll have that interview process October 12th, all day with three panel interviews, and then the Fire Board will conduct our interviews with the finalists on October 13th. And we'll also have a community meet and greet the evening of October 12th, and that'll be published as well. So for all the members in the audience, if you want to mark the evening of October 12th down, we'll be able to meet some of the prospective candidates for Fire Chief. And YCOM, nothing to report on there. Visit McMinnville, lots of things happening. I believe you guys all have an email for Sweep the Streets event, which is Saturday, October 8th. I believe they're meeting at 8:30 at the library, and that'll go till around noon, I believe. And if you want a nice hearty breakfast before then, we have a volunteer pancakes breakfast at 7:00 AM to noon on the 8th, so come fill up and support your volunteer firefighters. And that's my reports for tonight.
Thank you very much. Let's see, as you heard this evening, we were excited to welcome Director Jang from Business Oregon to present $1.3 million to APT, a local business. In addition to that, tomorrow night, we have both a McMinnville Water and Light Commission meeting over at the Water and Light Facilities, and then following that, there's an Ideas Fair that the city is hosting. And we, in addition to being an open space for dialogue about your ideas for how to spend our city dollars and invest them wisely, we will have councilors there to answer questions. I know we have a few folks signed up, and hopefully we'll have many of our councilors there to be able to have some frank dialogue and back and forth in a less structured setting. We also have, currently through the city, if you haven't seen this, we have our, we have a 40-60 forgivable loan program that is being done in partnership. And so if you're a small business looking for, any size business looking for an investment, you can contact us about that. We are working this year to expand the If I Were Mayor program to work with the city of Lafayette as well. So this was a program I brought to the city last year, and one of our winners ended up going on to win at State. And that type of, that type of recognition for your work early on can really have an incredible multiplier effect for helping kids stay in school and stay engaged. And with 40% chronic absenteeism in our high school right now, helping kids stay engaged in school is of utmost importance. And we're specifically working on this in conjunction with Lafayette because McMinnville School District also covers the city of Lafayette. So Mayor Malkinson and I are working together, along with Claudia Cisneros, our city recorder, and Oella Maya, and a few others from the team over at Lafayette to make that a broader program this year. On that, I also met with our superintendent this week. There's been some calls for if I would meet with the superintendent. I just wanted to say for the record that I meet with the leaders of not only our school, our university, the head of our largest employers, the head of our hospital as a regular part of my work, but I did have an additional meeting with the superintendent this week to discuss community issues that have been much discussed. And we are continuing to work together on forward-looking solutions that make sense for the schools and for the city of McMinnville. And I worked on a couple of grants, grant applications this week to support things happening in the community. So the city of McMinnville, the McMinnville Downtown Association, Visit McMinnville, we've all applied together for a grant to help beautify an alleyway where we've, we're hoping to have improvements in and around the downtown that are related not only to safety, but also just to the general enjoyment of our downtown and making that a more usable and walkable space. And then I also wrote a letter of support for a grant for the library to expand our Wi-Fi access. So that would be to add to the number of mobile hotspots that we have that are available for people to take home, whether those are students or individuals. Lack of access to the internet in today's world has immediate ties to economic disparity, health, school attendance. So we're very hopeful that that grant will come through and that we'll have a lot more Wi-Fi spots to make available in our community. And then very last for this evening, if you haven't seen, the new program that is starting to come out of Visit McMinnville, part of, or in conjunction and alongside the new Hello McMinnville program, we're launching with a Sweep the Streets on October 7th. And so if you would like to get engaged in helping literally clean up the streets of your city, then please sign up with me for October 7th through Visit McMinnville. All of the supplies needed, as well as some snacks, will be provided, and of course, some tours of some downtown facilities. So we hope to have robust turnout there. Thank you so much. And we will now go to our department head reports, starting with our city manager, Jeff Towery.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, a couple of items to report. On Thursday, I will be leaving to attend my final board meeting as the ICMA president and the ICMA Annual Conference. I'll follow up with a more detailed email for you. It will kick off a year as past president, which carries far less responsibility than the course of the last year, and just want to thank you again for your support and forbearance over the course of the last 12 months. Second, I will announce briefly today that you will see a formal announcement tomorrow morning about the hiring of a new city attorney. Media release and other details will be included.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't think it's your last report, but anything from you, interim city attorney Walt Gao?
Celebration cake, maybe.
We don't have another one here tonight.
I'll repeat my last report. I'm thrilled, Mayor, and I have nothing special to report beyond that.
Thank you. Community Development Director, Heather Richards.
Yes, hi. Good evening. I wanted to let you know that the Planning Commission approved the Stratus Village project at their meeting last week. It can be appealed to city council, but we didn't have a lot of testimony at the Planning Commission level, so just wanted to share that with you. And also to let you know, the Planning Commission is meeting twice a month right now, and their meetings are lasting four, five hours. They're doing a lot of work at this moment, and it's very thoughtful work. They're a great committee. They're showing up in full attendance and really working through the issues. So I wanted to pass that on to you. If you see them, please thank them for their work.
Thank you. Please thank them on our behalf as well. Finance Director, Jennifer Quayar.
Yeah, just to let you know, our auditors are, well, they're not literally onsite, but they are in our books remotely doing our FY '23 audit testing. So this is the first week of two weeks that they'll be doing the significant examination of our books and beginning the process of finalizing our financial statements for last fiscal year. So that's a big project for us, and it's going well so far. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Fire Chief, Rich Leifert.
I just want to say, again, thank you for the opportunity. It's been an honor. And I promised Scott that I wouldn't do a mic drop, so I'll just say thank you for everything and all of this.
Thank you, sir. HR Director, Vicky Hedges.
So as Jeff shared, we have a new city attorney, so excited about that. Also, as Adam shared, working on the Fire Chief recruitment. And also I want to share, when I started here a year ago, the employee handbook had not been updated in quite a number of years, and I'm happy to say it's a personal goal to have that done within a year, and that's been completed. So the city has a new handbook with updated policies and procedures.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. City Recorder, Claudius Cisneros.
Nothing to report.
IT Director, Scott Burke.
Nothing for the council tonight, thanks.
Thank you. And going on to Zoom, Police Chief, Matt Scales.
Can you hear me all?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Nothing to report other than though I'm not there tonight, Rich, I appreciate your time and your work with me over the years, and my nine years as chief has gone quickly, and thank you for your support over the years.
Thank you. I will now dig into the business of the evening, which is relatively brief this evening. To start, we have a consent agenda. Does any counselor wish to have anything removed from the consent agenda? Not seeing any, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second, I have a motion from Counselor Gary, a second from Counselor Manke. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. And the consent agenda has passed unanimously. And we'll now consider the second reading of ordinance number 5138. I would call on Matt Scales, our police chief, again, to present any additional information.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Nothing else new to report other than as a reminder from the staff report from August 31st that was submitted, this is some city ordinance cleanup, and I would lean on our interim city attorney Walt Gao, if he's got anything to add to the previous meeting that we had.
Thank you. Interim city attorney Walt Gao, anything to add?
I think the chief did an excellent staff report, and I don't have anything further unless the council has specific questions.
Thank you. As the council members recall, ordinance did not have unanimous support at the September 12th meeting. We're requiring a second reading to be conducted at a separate meeting, more than 24 hours apart, I will note. And unless any member of the council requests otherwise or has any, or requests otherwise, I would ask interim city attorney Walt Gao to read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number 5138, an ordinance repealing Chapter 9.20.30, Chapter 9.32.20, and Chapter 9.24.20 of the McMinnville Municipal Code, and amending Chapter 9.24.40 of the McMinnville Municipal Code.
Thank you. Is there any council discussion or deliberation on the ordinance? Council President.
Well, Counselor Chenoweth, at the last meeting, took issue with the panhandling part of this.
Yes.
And recognizing that our current ordinance is unconstitutional under Oregon statute, I believe is what you commented that evening. Is it common for other cities in the state to have some sort of panhandling ordinance that maybe restricts panhandling from certain feet of lighted intersections or something of that nature?
Cities can have panhandling regulations that restrict panhandling within certain circumstances. This particular ordinance, because it has no qualification to it, would likely be not upheld. If it is repealed tonight, that does not stop the council from doing a thoughtful consideration of a thorough panhandling ordinance that links panhandling to situations involving public safety, which is typically the situation. The ordinances that have been upheld are ones which restricted panhandling in areas where there was a creation of a risk to the public safety. And typically, the classic example is panhandling on an on-ramp. That is a good example. Panhandling itself is not what's being restricted, it's the location that's being restricted. So the city can undertake a thorough review and can adopt a panhandling ordinance that implements time, place, and manner standards if it chooses to do so. And the action tonight simply eliminates an ordinance that has no such standards in deference to the council's desire in the future potentially to adopt a more thorough and enforceable ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional discussion or deliberations? Not seeing anyone, I would ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 5138.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Manke and a second from Council President Garvin, and I would ask our city recorder, Claudius Cisneros, to poll the council.
Counselor Gary.
Aye.
Counselor Manke.
Aye.
Counselor Payne.
Aye.
Council President Garvin.
Aye.
And ordinance number 5138 is adopted by a vote of four to zero. I will now adjourn this council meeting at 8:11 PM. Thank you all so much for coming.